Call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, February 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alderperson Cronin.
Present.
Alderperson Gaskell. Alderperson Journey.
Here.
Alderperson Cole. I'm sorry, Alderperson Kemp.
Here.
Alderperson Cole.
Here.
Alderperson Posey.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Touche is absent.
We expect Evan to show up shortly. Next we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Good evening, council. My name's Chris Sellers. I'm with Veridian Homes and I just wanted to quick give you a brief overview as we've been down a long prosperous journey to get to this point tonight and wanted to just share a few items with you regarding the Cathedral Points or Woods at Cathedral Point development. The first is, is that we've received very positive reception from the neighborhood across the street, Cathedral Point. We've had a lot of inquiries about people looking to both move up and also move down. They've also, there are some units that will be available for downsizing more senior type housing as well as entry level housing for kids and people who have kids who are currently renting in the city of Verona and are looking for something at that entry level price point. We've been down a very long but prosperous path with staff and we've really addressed all of their comments and worked well together to really problem solve our way through this and any concerns that might have been had. The last thing I just want to inform you of again is we are Veridian Homes, we're a developer builder. We will control the price points of all these homes. We really very much want to have a wide variety of price points in this neighborhood. We are not asking for TIF. We are not asking for TIF. This is purely on our own. And we're trying to fill a need here in Verona of the missing middle. Last year there were 163 homes sold that have been loaded on the MLS in the city of Verona. The average sales price was $366,000 for those homes. Of the homes that were priced under $300,000, which is where we are targeting 20% of our homes to be at, under $300,000. The average age of those homes sold in the city of Verona last year was 66 years old. So again, we want to give new buyers the opportunity to own something new and maintenance free. Thank you.
We are still in the public comment. If any members wish to comment, members of the public wish to comment, now would be the time to do so. Seeing nobody else. Is anyone else having trouble hearing? Microphone? Oh, really? Is this better? Okay. All right, hopefully we won't get any feedback. Next we'll move on to item five, which is approve the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 Common Council meeting.
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 Common Council meeting say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item six is mayor's business. Don't have anything today. Item seven, announcements. Does anyone from the council have any announcements? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to item eight, the administrative report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. We have a few items for tonight. We have a personnel committee meeting this Friday at 8:00 AM. There is a spring primary election on February 18th. Just as a reminder, there is a primary election for the Supreme Court. There are three candidates on there, so I would encourage anyone to obviously vote and participate in that. We currently have two active public hearings. We have a public hearing at 103 North Franklin Street. That's for a zoning map amendment and conditional use permit for indoor sales and service land use. And then we also have a zoning map amendment for Epic Systems Corporation as part of a replat project. We do have a meeting, or I guess a tour, that the city is hosting with the school district on February 21st for the Sugar Creek Elementary School RFP. That tour will be held on Friday, the 21st at 10:00 AM. And that is linked and noticed on our website. We continue to move forward with the fire chief recruitment. As I have updates, I will provide those to the common council. We did finalize or complete our planning director recruitment. Unfortunately, the recruitment did not result in the hiring of a new director. The plan for 2020 is to continue to utilize existing staff and if needed utilize a private consultant as projects and needs arise. Tentatively, staff plans to repost a position at the end of 2020. So that is our current kind of plan to handle that. And as projects come up, we'll potentially bid those out for consultants to look at. And then finally, in your packet, we have the employee work anniversaries. Last thing I have is we did move the second Common Council meeting in March. We canceled the March 23rd Common Council meeting and we moved that meeting to March 30th. So that's the fifth Monday of March. So that fourth Monday meeting has been canceled and it's been moved to the fifth. Just mark your calendars accordingly. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Alder Ricky.
I guess I just want to know if I can presume that there is quorum for the 30th because I was able to attend on the 23rd but not the 30th.
Yes, I guess there was.
Just want to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We will move on to item nine, the engineer's report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I'm going to focus on the projects that have action on them or have been updated since the last time. For the well six pumping station construction, the exterior walls are complete and the roof is on. Work is progressing on the interior walls and projected to be finished by the end of this week. Interior plumbing and electrical will follow the completion of the interior walls. For the high school, public road improvements, traffic will continue in the same location. West Verona Avenue will be open, two lanes in each direction, and West End Circle will remain in its winter stage. Underground electrical and signal items will be placed along West Verona Avenue and West End Circle in preparation for signal installation later this winter or early spring. Along Stewart Woods Road and Wildcat Way, there will be periodic grading activities through the winter and water main and storm sewer installations along these roads will begin the week of February 17th. Structure work along Military Ridge State Trail and Wildcat Way pedestrian culvert and new Stewart Woods Road Bridge are continuing, continuing to progress. The Military Ridge State Trail slash Wildcat Way pedestrian box culvert concrete pours will wrap up in the next couple of weeks and then the structure will be backfilled and the trail placed back on top. The Stewart Woods Road Bridge will continue into spring. The Military Ridge State Trail reroute around the culvert work area will remain open throughout Military Ridge State Trail slash Wildcat Way pedestrian culvert work and trail restoration. For Liberty Park Phase Four construction, the utility work has been put on hold for the remainder of the winter. The water and sewer mains to the ACS building site are installed and tested. The box culvert is in place and the remaining work consists of storm sewer pipe and the construction of the streets. For the Fireman's Park Pond construction, the clay liner for the wet pond area has been completed and the new discharge control structure is in place. Site restoration will be on hold until spring when the ruts will be graded out and the slopes will be seeded. And then there's two projects that are actually out for bid right now. So the 2020 asphalt rehabilitation project, this project will consist of replacing the asphalt surface on Northern Lights Road between Epic Staff Park A and Epic Staff Park B. And again, that project's out for bid and bids will be opened on February 18th. And then the 2020 chip seal project, the project consists of chip sealing streets in the West Ridge Estates, Thompson Heights, and Cross Country Heights subdivisions. That project is also out for bid and bids will also be opened on February 18th. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineer's report? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 10, committee reports. First up, we have finance committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,541,132.34.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
For the sake of discussion, a couple things here. First of all, there's a payment for our transfer fees that would be reimbursed by the federal government and the difference thereafter paid by Epic in the amount of $111,032. There's also a bond payment in the amount of $1,053,280.49. And then finally, the last thing of significance is the fourth quarter room tax for 2019 in the amount of $70,000.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nothing further. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 10B, which is the Plan Commission. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. First, I would like to move approval of resolution number R-20-003 approving a conditional use permit amendment to the Epic Systems Corporation Group Development to allow for the construction of a workshop building located at 1979 Milky Way.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Gaskell.
The proposed conditional use permit would allow for the construction of a workshop building at 1979 Milky Way. The building will be used for woodwork and paintwork. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 3rd and voted seven to zero to recommend for the approval.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? I'll just say for myself that I am glad to see Epic is still doing well and that they continue to expand their buildings. With no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-20-003 approving a conditional use permit amendment to Epic Systems Corporation's group development to allow for the construction of a workshop building located at 1979 Milky Way signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell.
I move approval of resolution number R-20-004 approving a certified survey map for 142 Paola Street.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cole. Alder Gaskell.
The proposed certified survey map would dedicate right of way located at 142 Paola Street. The Plan Commission discussed the CSM on February 3rd and voted seven to zero to recommend for the approval of CSM.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-20-004 approving a certified survey map for 142 Paola Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. For the Plan Commission meeting, Alder Gaskell abstained on items three and four, so I will turn the explanation over to Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. Item number three is discussion of possible action on ordinance number 20-956, annexing .224 acres of land at 515 West Verona Avenue. The proposed annexation would annex .224 acres of land from the town of Verona to the city of Verona for 515 West Verona Avenue. The Plan Commission questioned the amount of money that we paid to the town of Verona as part of the taxes and what would happen if the city did not annex this amount of land. The Plan Commission discussed the annexation on February 3rd, 2020 and voted six to zero with one abstaining to recommend for the approval to annex .224 acres of land to the city of Verona.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Touche.
Can I get a little more background on the purpose?
Sure. This is a strip of property that is, well, it's in the town. When the hotel was developed originally, there was a survey, surveying mapping error. As part of that, there, it created a gap. It created a gap in the annexation. So there's a strip of land that kind of runs through pretty much the middle, northern third of the hotel that is legally and technically in the town of Verona. This issue came up as part of the town of Verona revaluation process. The town did a revale, similar to what we're doing this year. They just, they did that process last year and the issue came up to the town of that there was not a actual improvement value assigned to this strip of land. So they had a value on the land portion of this .224 acres of land, but there wasn't an improvement value. So as part of that revaluation, the town put a value on that strip, I think at $995,000. And putting that value on there, that was going to basically take the city portion, which has always been valued at 100%, even though that strip was in there, that would take our portion down by almost that million dollars. So in kind of looking at this, we thought it'd be best to annex this piece of property so we wouldn't be kind of dealing with the situation in the future of we have a strip that'd be in the town, we'd have the majority in the city. We thought we should just clean this up at the time right now.
So they're saying 22% of an acre is worth almost a million dollars?
Correct.
I need to buy more land in this town. How, 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 how did they determine this value?
That was one of my questions too. So they used the same assessing company that we use. So in speaking with our assessor, what their assessor did was establish the value of the actual hotel itself, whatever that might be. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. And then backed out the percentage of building that was kind of in that area. It's a three-story building and determined that. So you have the value of the whole overall building. They determined what percentage of that building was in the strip and then took that percentage and obviously applied it towards the actual value and that's how they came out of the value. So the math or the fundamentals behind, they determined it. It's, it was reasonable. That's how I would have done it.
I have a few more if you don't mind. I keep going here. Thank you. So, so did they determine the total value of this hotel?
Yes, they're, yes.
Are they taxed at that value?
Yes. So whatever the value is, so a good chunk of it is in the city, but that .224 acres is in the town.
Can you tell me how many acres the hotel is?
I could look it up. I don't have it off.
Rough guess?
One or two. It's not, it's not that big.
One and a half?
Sure.
So what does that come to? That comes to, so it's an $8 million hotel?
Probably close. Probably close, seven, eight million.
It feels like they're just playing games for correcting a, to correct a clerical error. So, so can you explain the point of the concern about taxes we now have to pay the town because of this?
Sure. So we pay taxes. So state statute requires the city municipalities to pay townships five years' worth of taxes. So your tax bill's broken out into three or four different kind of areas. You've got the school district, the state, MTC, Dane County, and then your local taxing jurisdiction. So in that case, it's the town. So there's a value assigned to that. So for the town portion, when they just had the land value on it at $60,000, roughly that came out to just under $1,000. Once that improvement value was added of that $995-ish thousand, that's what created that 17, approximately $17,000 tax hit because the value came up by that much. So we're, we're basically paying that, that portion of that, of the, of the town share for the next five years. That's typical of any annexation.
And that's fair. I get that part. But this really feels like someone made a mistake and now it's going to cost the city an extra $16,000. Is that a fair? Where did this mistake come from?
It's been there for many years. And this was actually, to be perfectly transparent, this was something that we knew about as part of kind of when we discussed the boundary agreement. And our position at the time with the town was we wanted to keep status quo. So our intent at that point was we want to keep status quo. We don't want to raise an issue on this because obviously we don't want to be in a position of taking someone from the town as part of this agreement. So we just said, okay, we're not going to touch these. We have a couple of strips out there that are mostly right of way that we know about that are just leftover as surveying errors. So as part of those revale, that's when the town kind of raised the issue and that was back in, I think it was July and August when we first started working through this.
So what's the harm in leaving it the way it is?
We would lose that $955, $995,000 in value off ours.
But we never had property taxes out of it anyways?
We did. We had the full improvement value on it. So there was, the, the full improved value was applied just to the city portion of the taxes. The town never had that improvement value on the town portion of their taxes.
So it feels like they're playing a game with us to collect an extra 16 grand. Am I wrong?
They've, they've corrected, I think, what they perceived as an error. I mean, it, it hasn't set the best with me, to be honest with you as well. So I, I'm sympathetic to kind of what you're saying.
Honestly, it doesn't feel like they're playing fair with us, so therefore they're setting a tone that feels like how we should play with them going forward.
You know, we have a boundary agreement that says that, you know, when we acquire property, we'll pay them five years of taxes. But when that agreement's up, that's something we can look at.
Yeah. I mean, it, I believe we've gone, we've had opportunities to do things like annex land before value gets created on it. And we've chosen to wait to create the value and then annex it. I feel like in this case, it feels a bit gougie. And we played fair and nice up to this point. And seeing the town do this, it, it kind of changes the tone quite a bit. And I'll vote for it. It makes sense, but I, I really think this is a tactical mistake on their part. Thank you.
If I could just add one clarifying point, this, you know, technically while it is a part of the town, it's 100% surrounded by city, by the city of Verona and city provides 100% of services. So it's not like, I mean, this was basically free money for the town. They weren't, you know, doing garbage pickup or anything else. So like, I guess I'm a little baffled by their behavior as well.
To your point, they've done nothing. And somebody made a human error instead of recognizing what it, what it really is and letting this happen. They're gouging us. And that's a problem.
Anyway, thank you for the explanation, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Ricky.
Could you just clarify again, Mr. Sayer? Sorry if I wasn't clear on what happens if the city does not annex the amount of land?
So if we don't annex the land, the land stays in the town and there would be a value, an improved value assigned of that $995,000. For just example purposes, the city in the past has had that full improved value on the city's, fully on the city property in the city. So we would have to adjust our valuation of that building by that $995,000. So if we put a value just for sake of discussion at 7 million on the entire building, we would have to reduce our valuation on that building by $995,000. So either way, I mean, you're going to, you're going to either kind of take a hit by annexing it and paying the, the five years of taxes, or you're going to take a hit by having to reduce the building in value by proportionally to whatever the town has assigned the improved value to be. Either way, there's a hit on the tax, from the tax standpoint. From a cost standpoint, I should say.
And there's no way that the city can go back and say, let's annex it as if it hadn't been developed on? Like, was supposed to have happened in the first place and come to some common ground on that?
I've tried that repeatedly and it hasn't worked. I mean, one of my suggestions was we'd annex it as it's always been the last how many years and that, that didn't go anywhere. But I've attempted that approach myself numerous times and it hasn't happened.
Alder Kemp.
Sorry about that. So their approach is to, to take that tack knowing full well what the consequences are of the city, even though we reached out in good faith to them. They just basically said no.
I've raised that concern with the former town administrator. Now she's no longer at the town, but I have raised that with her on a few different occasions.
And can you, can you kind of give me a better understanding of the tone and the negotiations with them? Have you just been stonewalled at every?
Yeah. I mean, I first started dealing with this when I was actually on vacation. This is when it kind of hit my desk initially. That was back in, you know, July, August. And I know I had a conversation with, with, with the former town administrator when I came back. And my, you know, my, to be honest, my tone wasn't the best. I was a little frustrated by this myself, just be from the standpoint of we knew about this as part of our boundary agreement. And it was an understanding at that point that we weren't going to take any action on this, that we weren't going to impact any value in the town. And I felt a little, I want to say slighted, but I felt a little, you know, that my word had gone back, you know, I went back on my word. They went back on their word to me, which obviously upset me. I think they, they see it more as a technicality. The technicality, they should always should have had a value to it, that there was a mistake and there should have been a value assigned to it. So I think they're treating it more as a technicality, which technically they're right. But, you know, it created some issues between staff and the city and the town. I know there's frustration on our side.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, motions? If anyone would like to make a motion? Alder Touche.
Thank you. Thank you. Make a motion to approve ordinance number 20-956, annexing .224 acres of land at 515 West Verona Avenue.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alder Cole. Any further discussion on the motion? Alder Gaskell.
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
And the next one, I assume, as well?
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 20-956, annexing 0.224 acres of land at 515 West Verona Avenue, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes six to one with Alder Kemp voting against and Alder Gaskell abstaining. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 20-957, rezoning lands at 515 West Verona Avenue. Proposed zoning map amendment would zone .224 acres of land from rural agriculture to urban commercial. This is for the annexation we just talked about. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 3rd, 2020 and voted six to zero with one abstaining to recommend for the approval of the zoning map amendment. And this zoning district would match the existing hotels on the property.
So this is just some zoning kind of cleanup? Alder Touche.
I'm making, I am making a motion to approve ordinance number 20-957, rezoning lands at 515 West Verona Ave.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. Alder Touche.
I do have a question, as I have more time to stew on this. Who, who made the error?
It's probably, I would say there's probably two errors in there at least. So the first error was probably done at the time of the surveyor.
And the surveyor's name is?
I don't know. I don't know. That was 15, 20 years ago. But then if you want to start talking about assigning the assessed value to it, that most likely involved the town's former assessor and our former assessor as well too.
Thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 20-957, rezoning lands at 515 West Verona Avenue, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes six to one with Alder Gaskell abstaining. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. Move approval of resolution number R-20-005, approving a final plat for the Woods at Cathedral Points to create 158 lots and seven outlots subject to the following conditions. A, the final plat should be modified to have private alleys labeled as fire lanes. B, the final plat should become effective upon annexation of the property. And C, the final plat should become effective upon execution of a development agreement.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Gaskell.
The proposed final plat would create 158 lots and seven outlots for the Woods at Cathedral Point located at southeast corner of County Highway M and Range Trail. Plan Commission discussed the final plat on February 3rd. Comments included parking for guests for the alley-style homes, i.e. where would they? A request for three-bedroom homes priced for first-time homebuyers, housing prices, housing variety, a better mix throughout the development of types of housings, not clustered in sections. Praise for modifying Lot 83 location to improve access to the parkland. Questions regarding property along the Ice Age National Scenic Trail and communication between the two parties. Location of sidewalks and trails, concern with the parkland trail and property owners believing it is their backyard, and cluster mailboxes. Plan Commission voted four to three to recommend for the approval of the final plat with the aforementioned conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Touche.
Yeah, I have to say this is another tough one. These private alleys. These private alleys feel like a recipe for disaster. I think what the developer has done here has done their best to make it less of a disaster, and I greatly appreciate that. I just wanted to be said, I begrudgingly, because I like everything else, and a developer in this case, I'm gonna vote yes for it, but the alleys, I don't want other developers start thinking that this is a blank check for more private roads and alleys. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Alder Gaskell?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that at the Public Works Committee, this was discussed, and actually, it was voted two to zero that, on, to be, with staff input, that private alleys was the way to go in terms of not putting that cost back onto the city for maintaining it for a couple houses, so. And I think there are other conditions that this developer is meeting, that again, would cause some pause for people, but the fact that they are doing it, and have been very responsive, I think, to concerns from all various bodies that approvals have gone through, it's certainly not a blank check for any other developer to come in and make those assumptions.
Alder Ricky?
I also am generally opposed to private streets or alleys or any kind of road, but do I understand it correctly that this means that the maintenance of the alley will be, like, through an HOA or some private entity, but that our law enforcement can enforce no parking there, and that's why it's a fire lane?
Mr. Sayer?
And also, garbage pickup, I have a question about, like, will these people take their garbage to be picked up by the rest of waste management, who picks up the city's garbage?
So from a private standpoint, the maintenance would be on an HOA or some type of private association to handle that. It would not be the city handling that. The fire lane language gives us the ability to tow and remove those vehicles, so that's why it's on there. We've used that language in other developments, that it lets us, if the reason requires us to, we can get in there and take it or tow people. And then my understanding from a garbage standpoint is that they would be done no different than kind of how we have it done elsewhere in the city with waste management. It's a single-family residence, so it's a matter of just truck coming down the road and picking up the garbage like it normally would. They might have to make some different passes on it, just because you have, you can't get both sides of it, but it would be done by waste management.
Any further discussion from the council? I'll just throw in my own two cents here, I still really don't like private roads. I understand, you know, that the concern from staff to buy special equipment to basically maintain one alley in the city is probably not a good use of public funds, so I get that, but I hope we don't necessarily make a habit of this going forward. I do like the variety of housing prices. This is, of course, not what we would term affordable housing, but I think, I think you could call it attainable housing, and that is a kind of progress. And it is nice to work with a developer who, you know, who's willing to work with the city on that. I'm happy to see the Ice Age Trail expand, I'm always happy to see the Ice Age Trail expand. And I just want to echo something that was said, I believe, by Alder Gaskell at the Plan Commission meeting, that I hope that the apartment units that are part of this have some three-bedroom apartments for families. Any further, Alder Ricky?
I just had a question, I guess, for the developer about water, stormwater management. I'm, just with all the flooding going on, is there any way to install rain garden type of landscaping in addition to the regular tree and grass plantings?
If the applicant would like to answer that? Excuse me.
Good evening, council. My name is Dan Day from Denofre O'Kakis and Associates, representing Verden Homes here this evening. From a stormwater management aspect, we have designed the system to basically be contained in itself and being able to use the stormwater management practices on the site, more in the larger context of a whole neighborhood concept for the, for the, for the stormwater management. This, you know, includes infiltration basins, wet detention basins, and assorted things necessary to be able to make that happen. All of that said, that meets the current ordinances and requirements of the state and the county and the, and the city here also, but it doesn't, doesn't disallow anybody from wanting to do a rain garden to do that on their own property. Some of the properties are obviously more set up to be able to do that, that have a little bit larger yards than what some of the smaller sites here would be able to do. So it's something that we probably, you know, we would allow somebody to do if that's what they wanted to do, but really, when the big flooding stuff that we're talking about, that has been happening over the last few years, that's a major concern. The bigger facilities are built and designed to be able to hold and maintain those larger and large events like that.
Anything further, Alder Ricky?
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Another question, please?
Oh, sure. Alder Gaskell?
Sure. On the site maps, how accurate is the Ice Age Trail depiction?
Mr. Sayer, or the applicant?
So the Ice Age Trail corridor that's identified on that site map is from the GIS system that we got through the county, and there actually have been a few amendments that we're aware of where that was not reflected in the data that we were, that we got from the county effectively. For example, the parking lot in the northeast corner of it, where the trail now jogs further east to get to that, was not reflected, but we tried to show as close as we could where that trail corridor was as it came further south. In talking with the Ice Age Trail folks, there may be opportunities, now that that does, that the property doesn't have kind of that jog in the middle, that they may evaluate relocating some of the trail corridors in there, but that would be done at a later date.
Okay. I'm just looking at, I guess, just north of the open space that's at the southeast corner. The trail jogs fairly close to the property line there, and I'm just wondering if you know what that distance is?
I do not offhand.
Okay. So I think some of the concerns that we heard about at Plan Commission were that not really knowing what the buffer is on either side of this trail, how close we're getting to the property line, so if that's something that we can put some attention to, that would be helpful.
Certainly, and as I said, we've been talking with Ice Age Trail folks, sorry, Brian Munson with Van Allo Associates, I apologize, I didn't mention that. We've been talking to them about that as part of the ongoing discussions of the, both the properties being moved into the Ice Age Trail, as well as buffering landscaping along that corridor, and notifications for the property owners that have but the Ice Age Trail for things such as prescribed berms, and the fact that they're butting up to the Ice Age Trail, and that that's both an amenity, but it comes with people using that property. So that's something we can talk to them about, and would be happy to.
And then the berm is going to be entirely on the property, right? It's not gonna be on the Ice Age Trail, and then do you know what, if it's gonna be in turf, or?
We're still talking with them about what the landscaping will be, ranging from tree species and just treatments, to try to make sure that we delineate where the corridor line is, and encourage appropriate maintenance of both sides, so that there aren't any issues down the line from the homeowners or from the Ice Age Trail users.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from, oh, sorry, Alder Journey?
One more question on the Ice Age Trail. At that corner on the north end, where the trail seems to be really close to the property line, where, how will that impact the parking area for the Ice Age Trail?
And actually, again, this map was from the county, and I believe that trail segment now moves, has moved to the eastern portion of their property. When they put the parking lot in on the northeast corner of their parcel, they relocated the trail as it cut across that prairie restoration. So a couple of things will happen with the dedication of the lands from this, first to the city and then to the Ice Age Trail. That kettle will entirely become part of the Ice Age Trail, so both sides of that, including the upland sloped wooded areas, will become part of the trail, so there'll be a good buffer, both with the grade and the existing trees around the kettle being preserved permanently as part of the Ice Age Trail. So they'll have some other opportunities to evaluate trail systems within their property. I think they're, something that they're interested in doing to help maximize the enjoyment of that property.
Further questions or comments from the council? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of resolution number R-20-005, approving a final plat for the Woods at Cathedral Point to create 158 lots and seven outlots with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. I move approval of resolution number R-20-006, approving a general development plan that would allow for the construction of 101 street-access single-family homes, 18 twin homes, 38 alley-access single-family homes, and 100 multifamily units for the Woods at Cathedral Point, subject to the following conditions: A, the GDP shall become effective upon the execution of a development agreement; and B, the GDP shall become effective upon annexation of the property.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Ricky, Alder Gaskell?
The proposed GDP would allow for the construction of the above-stated types of homes and units. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 3rd and voted four to three to recommend for the approval of the GDP with the aforementioned conditions.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution number R-20-006, approving a general development plan that would allow for the construction of 101 street-access single-family homes, 18 twin homes, 38 alley-access single-family homes, and 100 multifamily units for the Woods at Cathedral Point with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. I move approval of ordinance number 20-958, rezoning lands to urban residential, mixed residential, neighborhood residential, and public institutional located in the Woods at Cathedral Point, subject to the following conditions: A, the zoning map amendment shall become effective upon the execution of a development agreement; B, the zoning map amendment shall become effective upon annexation of the property; and C, for the property zoned UR, the property owner shall install and maintain a multifamily notification sign as outlined in the city's residential development policy.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Posey, Alder Gaskell?
The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone Lot 35 to UR, Lots 31 through 34, and Lots 46 to 59 to MR, the remaining lots to NR, and Outlots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 to PI. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 3rd and voted five to two to recommend for the approval with the aforementioned conditions.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 20-958, rezoning lands to urban residential, mixed residential, neighborhood residential, and public institutional located in the Woods at Cathedral Point with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission? With that, we'll move...
I don't know, we're getting on this.
I'm sorry, but the public comment...
There's not anymore?
No, the public comment was the only, the only time to speak. We'll move on to item 11, new business, which is discussion and possible action regarding resolution number R-20-007, approving a TIF development agreement and a public improvements development agreement with Sugar Creek Commons LLC for construction of a mixed-use development containing a hotel, conference center, and mixed-use building located at 509 West Verona Avenue in Tax Incremental District Number Nine. Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. So in your packet was the draft TIP development agreement and public improvements development agreement. The city has approved plans for the Sugar Creek Commons Development to construct a 120-room hotel with a conference center and mixed-use buildings containing 143 apartment units and 26,000 square feet of commercial space. The developer anticipates starting the construction of the project in the spring of 2020. To help pay for costs associated with remediating the contamination on the property and to install public infrastructure improvements to serve the property, Sugar Creek Commons LLC is seeking payments in the amount of $3.2 million. Staff and the city attorney have negotiated terms for a development agreement for the project. Under the terms of the agreement, the city would provide up to $3.2 million to Sugar Creek Commons LLC to pay costs associated with remediating the contamination on the property and to install public infrastructure improvements to serve the property. As part of the agreement, the city agrees to pay annually 90% of the available tax increment generated from the property to Sugar Creek Commons LLC after the city receives $5,000 for administrative costs. Only available tax increment generated from the property will be used to pay Sugar Creek Commons LLC, and that portion is the hotel portion and the mixed-use portion of it, not the multifamily. As part of the agreement, Sugar Creek Commons LLC will remediate the contamination on the property and install public infrastructure improvements. Staff recommends approval of the agreements with the condition, the agreements are subject to reviews by the city administrator and the city attorney. We do have the agenda notice for potential closed session, that is an option for the council. I think from our standpoint of staff right now, I don't think we need to go into closed session to discuss this. The city attorney, Brian Kleimer, is also here, he'd be happy to answer any questions, and so would I.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? And if I could add, I don't think we'll need to go into closed session, because if this does end up being the final deal, we should talk about it in public, because then we're not compromising the city's bargaining position. Anyways, anyone have any thoughts?
Hear what you got.
I guess, while people think of things to say, I will say that I'm happy to see this move along. This, this project is an area that's, that's been blighted for years, and it'll be good to see something productive go there that people from the city can, can, can visit regards to the retail. I think there's a reasonable amount of TIF dollars that go towards the cost of cleanup, and then, of course, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF, which minimizes the risk to the city, and means the city doesn't have to borrow money to support the TIF, which, how do I put this diplomatically? This means that the developer does not build anything, as sometimes the developer doesn't, the city's not on the hook for anything. So it protects the city, and by the city, I mean the people of Rona. Alder Touche, then Alder Gaskell?
Question, along with this, during the negotiations, they've talked timing, because honestly, I'm kind of ticked that the automotive place is gone and the car wash and things that were used are gone and a pile of rubble right now.
So we have talked timing, and starting on page 123 of your packet is the public improvements agreements. This is the standard public improvements agreement that we use for similar public improvement projects, roads, or things of that nature. There is language in that agreement that talks about the work starting, I believe, on June 1st or June 15th of this year, but having to be completed, yeah, so if you look at page, page 125 of your packet, which is page three of the actual agreement, construction would start on June 15th, be substantially completed on or about October 31st, 2020. We do have a letter of credit that's going to be associated with the agreement, and like we would typically have, if a developer doesn't complete the work within the time period required, then we would have the ability to complete the public improvements using the letter of credit. Now, the, the public improvements agreement does not deal with the remediation, and as Adam said, you're only, as the city, if you approve this agreement, the payments that are being made under the TIF agreement are only being paid, you're only paying the developer for the costs related to the public improvements and the costs related to the remediation. And that was the, essentially, the offer that you had authorized staff to make back in December, and so that's been accepted by them. I don't have the exact, I think when you, starting on page 148 of your packet, is the TIF agreements, and the TIF agreement is going to bring into its scope the environmental remediation work that's going to be, be done, because there's, starting on page 151 of your packet and page four of the actual agreement, it talks about the developer's different obligations. So they're gonna have to satisfy the, all the obligations contained within that Section 3, and then to be able to qualify for the, for the municipal revenue obligation, and on top of that, then they also have to build on, on the property, because it's only from building on the property are they going to actually see any increment that's generated. But within that Section 3, they need to complete the remediation on or before December 31st of 2020, so by the end of this year. And the other thing that I would add is that when you, when you look at page, still on page 5, Section 5B... when you, when you look at page, still on page five, section 5B of the agreement, one of the things that I know the council has been concerned about is, okay, we have a TIF district that's been created, we have a project that's been presented, we don't want to be in a situation where we execute this agreement and all of a sudden, nothing happens on the property. And so, we do have language that I mentioned before, where the public improvements have to be done by a specific date. We have language within the TIF agreement that says the environmental remediation has to be done by December 31st of 2020. Now, if it turns out that they don't, if they don't complete either of those by July 1st of 2021, that's when we have the ability to bail on the agreement, and we wouldn't have any obligation. So, at a staff level, we felt like we needed to build in a little bit of a cushion. So, just because the agreement says they have to get the remediation done by the end of this year, we did not put that date as the date where we could get out of the agreement. We wanted to give six months' cushion, but that is also in there. So, if they have not completed the improvements and the remediation by July 1st of 2021, we have the ability to pull out of the agreement if we'd like.
So, the remediation, how is that going to be monitored and policed?
Well, there's, so, Theron and his team have already gone through working with the developer and effectively identified what everyone believes the remediation that needs to be completed. And then, we're going to be essentially relying on the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. So, what the agreement says right now is, and this is on, in that same section three, "The environmental remediation shall be considered completed when the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources confirms its completion in writing." So, I think that's kind of the entity that we have to rely on to make sure it's done, but we do have language built in to have that kind of endpoint.
Alder Gaskill, then Alder Ricky?
Thank you. This also relates to the remediation. The potential cost of remediation was determined by the development team, and then was it verified by us?
Correct.
So, if it comes in grossly under, for whatever reason, the city, we're still with that $3.2 million, we're not adjusting anything. But the remediation, remediation will still be complete as we're expecting it to be complete.
Correct. And also, I would say the flip side of that is if it comes in over, they still need to complete it, and there's still, the amount that they're going to be paid back is the same. Yeah.
Alder Ricky?
So, is there really no remediation necessary for the, the public improvements, before the public improvements?
No, I mean, my understanding is that the work will probably be done concurrently. I'd say this, I mean, we, I don't, at a staff level, we don't want to get involved in the property when it comes to the remediation, because then all of a sudden, there is the potential that we could take on some liability if we start working with the remediation. The public improvements are separate, and so we felt that we could treat them separately and kind of have our standard form agreement. That is, you know, the reason why we get the letter of credit is we don't want anybody to ever start doing the public improvements and not complete them, because then we kind of have half-finished improvements. So, we do have the ability to complete the public improvements with the letter of credit. We wouldn't have the ability to complete the remediation, whatever is going to be required. But I think at a staff level, our thought process is, that's not something that we want to get involved in.
So, what if there is more cleanup to be done before finishing the public improvements? Then, I mean...
Well, I guess, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the public improvements are not dependent on the remediation. In other words, the public, even if there needs to be additional remediation, the public improvements can still be completed.
Yes, you're correct. Alder Ricky, and then Alder Posey, I think? No? And then Alder Gaskill?
I mean, I'm not an engineer, so maybe I don't understand it. But like, if the remediation is under the, where you're building the road, then wouldn't it need to be done first?
So, the remediation is, you know, mostly under where the gas station used to be. There's a plume, obviously, that's out there as well. But from a remediation standpoint, the extent of the remediation will be under kind of where that gas station building used to be. That's where the bulk of the contamination is. So, the public improvements would be in Legion and also on West Rona Avenue. And there wouldn't be much, if any, remediation as part of that. And that's, you're not as deep in that project as well, because you're talking underground parking is part of the, you know, cleanup of the gas station site. Miss Fisher, you want to add something?
Yeah, I can just add that for the actual development of the apartments, there can be like off-gassing from the contaminated material, so you have to remove that and put in ventilation systems. If there's some contamination under the road, if it remains undisturbed, in some cases, that can be okay as well. So, it's just a little bit different depending on the use. And like Adam said, most of the contamination is under where the building is going to be.
Alder Gaskill?
This is a question of timing of the public improvements. Are they all done at once? Because I'm wondering, like, once we sign the agreement, are we vacating Top Avenue and those people are then moving on, or is it phased?
Okay. So, the Top Avenue vacation would be required at the time of that multifamily portion of the project. So, right now, we're talking about the mixed-use along Rona Avenue and the hotel. So, utilities would still remain in Top Avenue until that would be redeveloped for the multi. So, for the improvements we're talking about right now, those would be run up Legion, I believe, to West Rona Avenue. And then, there'd be an existing, is it a storm or sanitary that runs to the site that would be removed? Something through the site?
Yep, there is a water main that'll go through on the, that'll be removed on the south side, and then a new water main that's installed, a new sanitary sewer as well, and then new storm sewer that's going to be rerouted.
Okay. And so, when we vacate Top Avenue, it's no longer under city jurisdiction then, is that correct?
Correct, and that'd be a separate action. That'd be done by, by a CSM, or the vacation process is outlined in statute.
So, the $3.2, I don't know what he said, the $3.2 million is for all public improvements for the entire project?
So, you're correct. It's for, the $3.2 is for the public improvements and the remediation portion.
Alder Journey?
At what point did the TIF payments start?
Oh, obviously, well, the, they essentially would start once there's increment that's been generated from the property. And that typically then, typically, that would require some type of building or structure to be completed. Now, you can certainly have situations where you get, you know, a partially completed building. So, theoretically, we sign the agreements, the project starts this summer. It may be that some construction of the buildings starts this year so that when it gets reevaluated in January of 2021, there would be increment. And then, so, if, when you have a reevaluation in January of 2021, essentially, the, the first increment payment that could be, go to the developer, assuming they've satisfied all their obligations, would be November of 2022.
Okay. When, when some of the project has already been completed or started?
Yeah, I'm understanding there's been some form of demolition that's, that's kind of started that. And so, I'm not sure if that's actually, I don't know if that's actually resulted in any increment. Theoretically, if that has resulted in increments, once the developer completes all its obligations under the agreements, if there is increment available, then it could be paid to the developer.
So, it's done in phases then, as far as the TIF payments are concerned?
Yeah, the TIF payments are, I mean, phases to the extent that it's on an annual basis. So, I mean, the best way to think about it is, if everything goes well, as we're hoping and as the developers hoping, we're going to have some completed structures. And then, on an annual basis, we're going to start, we pay ourselves administrative costs from, you know, the first chunk of the, of the increment, and then the next 90% goes to the developer up to that cap of $3.2 million. I think that within your packet, there is a spreadsheet that will be Exhibit D to the agreement. So, that's on page, looks like about 168 of your packet. And so, when you look at that, obviously, these are estimated numbers, but I think it's anticipating that if construction effectively starts this summer, that the obligation to pay the developer the $3.2 million will run, I think, in either 2032 or 2033.
Anything further? Any other questions, comments, or motions? Alder Gaskill?
Thank you. I move approval of resolution number R-20-007 approving a TIF development agreement and public improvements development agreement with Sugar Creek Commons LLC located at 509 West Rona Avenue in Tax Incremental District Number 9.
With, can just, the condition in the packet?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Which is basically attorney review of the final agreement?
And city administrator.
And city administrator, yes.
Yeah. I will let you know, there are some updates that we're going to have to make to the agreement based on some discussions that I've had with the developer attorney. But these are, I would say, language issues related to the different entities that own property. They are not going to change, we will not change the substantive terms of the agreement. If something were to come up, then it would have to come back to you. But I do not envision that happening. I think these are all just going to be language issues. But that's essentially the reason for having the condition.
Motion by Alder Gaskill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Gaskill?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-20-007 approving a TIF development agreement and a public improvements development agreement with Sugar Creek Commons LLC for construction of a mixed-use development containing a hotel, conference center, and mixed-use building located at 509 West Rona Avenue in Tax Incremental District Number 9 with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 11B, which is a discussion and possible action regarding development review agreement between the City of Rona and Morningside Boulevard LLC. Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. This is a development review agreement between the City of Rona and Morningside Boulevard LLC. Morningside Boulevard is the road that would help serve the Whispering Cove's development. That road is kind of straddling a couple of different property lines, and that is between kind of a four-party group that is involved with that LLC. Like any development, before it comes into the city, we require a development review kind of agreement. The biggest component of that agreement is there's a deposit that's required. In this case, the recommended deposit is $30,000. The purpose of that deposit is to cover third-party costs, including engineering fees and also legal fees associated with that. And as part of that, when we get those invoices, we then draw on that account. It's a pretty straightforward agreement. We've approved very similar agreements with our developers. You know, that staff recommends the common council approve the development review agreement between the City of Rona and Morningside Boulevard LLC.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Gaskill?
So, this is an LLC formed solely for the development of this road through Whispering Cove's?
Yes.
Is this a standard way to do things?
Um, it's been done before. I mean, it's, I mean, when it's, you've got four different kind of property owners in the area, and the road is kind of straddling that line, so it's, you know, it's, it's one of the options of how it could be looked at. There's other ways you could do it, but this is an option by forming an LLC and having that group kind of run that portion of the construction. There's other ways that could happen, but it's, it's not unheard of.
Okay. Was this mentioned at the beginning of the process, or is it literally a new thing that's come up now?
This, this LLC?
Yeah.
It's been there for some time, and the, the, the purpose of it, quite honestly, is there was a concern about some of our invoices, how they're being billed off, and they should be billed to the LLC. So, the cleanest and easiest way for us to do that is to have this agreement in place and then draw on those funds. And the purpose of this, too, is in case this property never annexes into the city, we're not out any money.
Questions, comments, motions? Alder Gaskill?
Okay. I will move approval of the development review agreement between the City of Rona and Morningside Boulevard LLC.
Motion by Alder Gaskill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Gaskill?
No, thank you.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of development review agreement between the City of Rona and Morningside Boulevard LLC signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. We are on 11C, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of operator licenses. Clerk Clark?
We need a motion, please, to approve operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Ricky. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. We're on item 12 adjournment. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And we are adjourned at 8:04 PM. Thank you.